Let the record show that all commissioners here, including the alternates. First item on the agenda tonight is to elect the chair and vice chairman. Who wants to be chair? I'll do it.
I would nominate Denver.
Second?
Second.
All right. Vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, guys. Chair. All right. Vice chairman.
I nominate Mike.
I'll second the nomination.
Well, thanks, guys. Do I have a choice in this? No, I'm just kidding. Just kidding.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Passes. Chair. I think you've got to change over here. Does he have to change?
No, if you're still the chairman, you stay right where you're at.
Vice chair.
Vice chair, does he go to the right or can he stay there?
He'd stay there.
Perfect.
Wait, I'll take it back if he doesn't have to.
Brent does not want me to lean left.
He needs to stay over on this side.
All righty. The next thing on our agenda. I apologize to you guys out there. I'm usually sitting there, so. Agenda three. Consider approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of planning and zoning held on August 16, 2022. Do we have any changes to the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number four. Consider approval of minutes from special joint workshop at Highland Village City Council planning and zoning held on August 30, 2022. Agenda item number four. Consider approval. Do we have any changes? No? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Autumn, do I have to say everybody's name when they?
I made the first or second?
Yeah.
It always helps for the minutes and for the record.
Okay.
However, we are work ahead.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Number five. Consider approval of minutes from special joint workshop of the Highland Village City Council planning and zoning held on September 27, 2022. Consider approval. Do we have any changes to the minutes? Nope. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve.
Jared makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. Visitor comments?
We have no visitors tonight.
Awesome.
Sorry, guys. I was gonna say, that's kind of rude.
Agenda seven. We're here to review and consider an application for a site plan for the property located at 113 Barnett Boulevard, being the remainder of Track 2 Barnett subdivision. And here comes Autumn the Awesome to give us a briefing.
Chairman Commissioners, Autumn Ammon, Community Development Coordinator. Now, bear with me tonight. I'm going to go through a lot of detail on the site plan for our viewing audience out there, watching us on TV. As stated, we received an application for a site plan to construct a building of approximately 7,200 square foot at the address of 113 Barnett Boulevard. This lot sits directly behind the Whataburger and the Neighborhood Credit Union off of 407. The property is owned by Dr. Anisha Jacob. She currently has her practice here in Highland Village, which is Village Vision, and she would like to now build her new building here and remain in Highland Village. At this time, 5,760 square foot of the building would be for her business, and the remaining 1,440 square foot would be for future lease space. So the zoning on the property is PDC, planned development commercial. Medical is allowed within this zoning by right, okay? Compliance for this building is regulated by the Non-Residential Overlay Zoning Ordinance, or what we know as the Look and Feel in our base comprehensive zoning ordinance. So you received a copy of the Non-Residential Overlay Ordinance in your packet, and from that ordinance, one of the first items in the ordinance is your intent and purpose of the ordinance. This is something tonight you'll need to take in consideration as you're going through and reviewing the case. Doesn't meet the intent and the purpose of the overlay zoning ordinance. The ordinance also mentions in Exhibit B attached to that ordinance, which shows the windows and building type along with masonry coverage, which we know today we cannot regulate any type of the exterior building materials. However, in Section 69.9 of the Non-Residential Overlay Ordinance, it states where the primary elements of the building are not consistent with Exhibit B, it shall require approval from City Council with P&amp;Z's recommendation. Also, something else you might want to consider, that this building is not directly on 407, and we are almost built out, okay? So the doctor, she is very passionate about this building. In order to build it, she will have to request two exceptions to the Non-Residential Overlay Ordinance, and I will go through those two requested exceptions here in a moment. First, I want to go through some of the items on the site plan. So this building will be addressed off of Barnett Boulevard, even though the front of the building will face the public access and drainage easement. They will construct an eight-foot trail on the north property line. They will construct a five-foot sidewalk along Barnett Boulevard, along with landscaping and trees and bushes to shield the parking spaces there along Barnett. They will have a dumpster on the site. It will be enclosed and have landscaping around it, so it will be screened from the public right away. Lighting on the site, they will have sufficient lighting. They will need detention on the site. The detention will be on the east side of the property. They will have to remove trees for this detention pond and any easements needed. However, they will be leaving a total of four existing trees and planting additional trees for screening. Ordinance states roof shall be sloped, gabled, or pitched. The Non-Residential Overlay Ordinance does not state how much of a pitch or slope the roof shall have. So, within this building, the architect did state they have a slope of 3/4 inches on the street side, so it does meet the intent of the ordinance. The ordinance also states glass curtain walls are not allowed. However, with this building, glass curtain walls are part of the building materials, which, once again, we cannot regulate that. Now, as stated previously, the two exceptions to the Non-Residential Overlay Ordinance are as follows. They want an exception to the signage. So per ordinance, each tenant is allowed one sign per street frontage, and any additional signage can be requested at site plan. However, additional signage cannot be larger than the primary sign, primary sign being Village Vision, the name of the business. So the exceptions that will be requested here is to allow for the primary sign, Village Vision, to face the public access and drainage easement and not Barnett Boulevard, which would be considered street frontage. Allow additional logo sign to also face the public access and drainage easement, and to allow it to be larger than the primary sign. Allow the logo sign that is proposed to face Barnett Boulevard to be larger than the primary sign, Village Vision, and allow for future wall signage for the proposed lease space to face the public access and drainage easement. However, it cannot be larger than the primary sign. You guys got all that? And then the second exception will be to berming. Ordinance states berm shall be used to screen parking and service areas, and they shall not exceed a 3:1 slope. Exception within this area, like I had stated earlier, they're going to have a five-foot sidewalk. They're going to put trees along Barnett, and they're also going to plant bushes to screen their parking spaces, so making it difficult to put any berming in there. So in your package, you did receive a resolution with the exceptions listed. I cannot remember a time where I brought a resolution forward to P&amp;Z, so you might not be familiar with it. You've always had ordinances in front of you. The difference, more or less, ordinances are laws. Ordinances require public hearings and two reads at City Council, okay? Resolutions are more or less formal expressions of opinion. Our City Council uses resolutions a lot, more or less to approve policies, procedures. So this resolution tonight is documenting the request of the applicant, other than just giving verbal approval. We'll have some type of tracking. Resolutions do not require public hearings, and they go into effect after City Council hears them and if they approve them. So this application has been reviewed by city staff, city engineers, and the fire department. So tonight, you will be considering the overall site plan in the resolution with the two requested exceptions, and making a recommendation to City Council to either approve as submitted the site plan in the resolution requesting the exceptions, approve with revisions, or deny the request that it does not comply with one or more requirements of the ordinance. So with that being said, that is the end of my briefing. The property owner is with us tonight, Dr. Jacobs and her husband Ronnie Daniels, and Selmar Bracho with CCM Engineering. We also have the contractors, Triton Engineering here. So with that being said, if it's okay with the chairman and commissioners, the property owner would like to come up and give you a presentation.
Before that happens, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
On the landscape plan, L1, we go through, or the architect goes through all of his calculations on how we get to landscaping percentages and linear feet, but it's based on a total land size of 42,000. But, what is this? The dimensional control plan says that the gross site plan is 79,000. Why is, is there a, say that?
Okay, so you said.
Yeah, the plan that you've got in your hand right there shows a total square footage of 42. That's how they calculated how much landscaping, how much parking, that type of thing.
So Mike, here's your 72 here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But here, we're saying our landscaping, our total size is 42. It has to be, we have to have a 10% landscape of the total lot, right? But our total lot shown at 42,000 on the landscape plan, the site plan says the total lot is 79,000.
Is it taking up the footprint?
We're going to bring up Selmar.
But this is the lot, though, right?
Selmar Bracho with CCM Engineering, and she's going to answer that question.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. How are you all? I'm Selmar Bracho. My address is 2570 Justin Road, here in Highland Village. The difference that you see is because for the landscape calculations, we are only calculating the section of the land that we are developing. The plot has been filed as a whole lot, is one lot, but we are actually only developing 42,000 square feet, which is the building is going to be, all the sidewalks and the landscaping. So that's why there's that difference.
Even though your retention pond is on the other part of the lot, right?
Yes.
Okay. And that was another question I had, is what happens? Some of your drawing showed parking on the east side, but on the site plan and the landscaping plan, it doesn't show parking. So how does that end? How does that drive end? That's probably not up there. Again, I'm looking at sheet 02 of 12 on your dimensional control panel plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, so all that area to the right of the building.
This, yeah.
Yeah. And my question is, as Main Street, I think is what it's called, comes along the south end there, and it dips into your parking area, how does that end on the east side? I was a little confused with that, because it looks like you're almost setting up for parking spaces, but then it just dies in there.
Well, yes, actually, the building is located on the east side, and that's where we have all the parking on the east side and the front of the building. We have two access points from Main Street that comes.
Do you see that 31-foot dimension right there, right where your finger is? Yep. What does that indicate?
That's where the pavement is going to stop.
That line is the pavement line?
Yes. That line is the pavement line. Here's where the pavement is going to stop, and we're gonna, of course, is gonna have barrier-free ramp, barrier-free, I'm sorry.
Okay. And the 47-foot dimension, east to west, is your pavement line, and the 31 feet is where it ends from the street? Okay. Okay. But there is no parking on the east side at this point?
East side of the building?
East side of the building. Yeah. East side of the building, there is not parking.
There's no east, I'm sorry. Yeah, there's no parking on the east side.
Okay.
It's gonna be only front and west.
Okay. Can I ask you another question? Do you have a mechanical, it may be a little bit too early for us, but do you have mechanical equipment on the ground around the building?
No. All the equipment is going to be in the roof.
On the roof. So it's all going to be rooftop stuff, which will be covered by a parapet, right? Okay. Because I know that was one of the requirements as well, that it had to be screened by a parapet wall.
The property to the north where the dumpster is located, is there anything tying into the neighboring? So this parking lot would all be self-contained? Is that what I'm understanding? It wouldn't tie into the adjacent property to the north? Yeah. Yeah. Okay. And the dumpster would be on their front edge?
Just about. Here's their pavement line, right there.
That's what I read. But the dumpster is contained? It's a walled-in dumpster? Is that what I'm?
It's gonna be enclosed with walls and also with landscaping.
Again, not to get too technical about that as well, I had a question. On your dumpster elevations and plans, I read that the code is saying that you have to finish both sides, and on the perspectives, it doesn't look like it was, you're never going to see unless it's open, but are we planning to finish the inside of that enclosure as well? The screening? Because it just looks like this exposed CMU block on the inside.
Are you mean material?
Materialize, yeah. So.
That's a very good question. Actually, I do not have an answer for that. I think that is going to have a finish.
Yeah. Yeah. So this right here, our ordinance does call for that to be finished on both sides. So again, you're not going to ever see it, but it is what our ordinance calls for, so I would ask that you would at least.
Yeah.
Finish it somehow, so. Okay. Yeah, it's just a small thing, so. Okay, I have one other question, and this might be for Scott. That trail at the north end, the eight-foot trail, it, I think it deadens at the property line, right? But there's another trail that continues onto Briar Hill. Who makes that connection if they're not, if they're not connected? Yeah. I mean, is that a city requirement?
Who owns this property, I wonder?
And it's a great trail, and it's connected to the other trail, but I think there's going to be a gap there because the property lines don't.
Right, there's a temporary gap with this project, but the city has bond monies to close a lot of those gaps up and down the 407 corridor. So that'd be included in a city project.
Okay. So we wouldn't necessarily require them to make that connection. They would just have to go to their property line with that.
Yeah, they stay on their property.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Because, like I said, it's a great extension of that trail, but there's going to be a big gap there for. Okay. And the size of the retention pond is the size we're requiring?
Right. They calculate it out.
Calculate it out, yeah.
Actually, if I may say, the pond is calculated for the whole site.
For the full site? Okay.
Actually, when we develop it, if the rest of the land gets developed, the pound rate accounts for that part.
So my other question on that is the location that you have located that just about as far to the east as you can, and in doing so, you have to get rid of a lot of tree cover. That's a really good screen between your property and the apartments that are to the east. Any consideration to move that further west so we could save that tree screen?
Well, we did evaluate all the options that we have, and actually, to get the more buildable land, that's where we located all the way to the east side. So the owner of the land will have the opportunity to develop the east side.
Pride is much other.
And either way, when we are removing a few trees, some of those trees, I think, are classified like known, like they're not on the ordinance, what the ordinance specified, and we are adding all those new trees.
Right. Yeah, you are adding some trees that buffer that.
I'm sorry, yeah, to cover that removal.
Okay. Okay.
So I think we jumped ahead a little bit. We were going to allow them to give a presentation.
Sorry about that, Denver. My fault.
Good questions, though.
Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Let's finish all of my hard questions, please.
You sure?
Leave it up to me.
Do you all have any other questions?
I'll wait till.
I was going to wait till.
After the presentation.
You guys want to do it right. That's what you're saying.
You're sitting on this side.
Okay. I'm sorry.
You've got to throw something.
I got a little ahead of myself.
You're good.
Okay, we'll go to your presentation first. I'm sorry.
Well, actually, I do not have a presentation as if, as Autumn already gave the briefing on the project, and I'm just here to answer any question that you may have on the engineering design.
So we heard you are passionate about this building?
Yeah.
So tell us why you're passionate.
I'm sorry. She does have a presentation for it. Yeah, we'd keep everything.
Oh my gosh. Thank you, guys, for spending your Tuesday evening with me. I'm going to try to make this as quick as possible for y'all, but I just wanted to kind of explain some of the history of Village Vision Center, so you guys can have a little bit better idea of who we are. So I'm Anisha Jacob. I'm the owner and optometrist at Village Vision Center, and I personally grew up in Chicago. I got my doctorate in Chicago, and I moved here in 2015 after I married Ronnie. He refused to move to Chicago, so I had to move down here. So as we talk about this proposal for the 113 Barnett Boulevard, I just want to give a quick history of Village Vision Center and just share some of our values with you guys, so you kind of understand what we're bringing to Highland Village. So over the last seven years, I've practiced along with Dr. Phan and Dr. Lammer over there in the Village Creek complex. We've seen an unprecedented need for eye care in Highland Village. When I started, I thought, maybe I'll have like five patients a day, because there was literally an eye care center within, you know, every minute that you're driving down 407. But we have together created one of the largest optometry clinics in Denton County. We have over 800 reviews on Google. We have done over 30,000 exams here in Highland Village. We've sold over 10,000 pairs of glasses. So there's a lot of people here that need glasses and contacts and things like that. So in our reviews, you'll see over and over and over, Dr. Jacob, Dr. Phan, and Dr. Lammer have answered all my questions. We take our time to make sure each patient walks out with a clear understanding of their eye health. That's really important to us, that people here understand what they are coming in for, for their medical care. In order to give the best quality eye care, we had to expand our staff. We only had like three or four employees for the last five years, and in the past year, we've expanded to over 15 employees to take care of all the patients that are walking in through our door. We have literally no space, guys, to sit like I'm sharing an office with two other people, trying to work and trying to provide that high-quality eye care. We ran out of space, so that's why we bought that small piece, that two-acre lot in 113 Barnett. We want to bring a little bit larger, modern clinic, so we can accommodate our staff and continue to offer the same quality vision care. With this new clinic, we're going to be doing a lot of cool things that aren't currently offered in Highland Village. We're going to be fitting some specialty contacts for scleral lenses and to treat advanced eye care. We're going to be bringing in some latest and greatest treatment for dry eye therapy that isn't currently offered in Highland Village. We're going to be offering specialized contacts to children to stop the growth of their prescriptions. We're going to have a 24-hour emergency eye clinic. You don't have to go to urgent care, pay 150 bucks for them to say, "Go get your eye doctor to take a look at you." So we're going to have that right here in Highland Village. We're also going to be bringing in specialized doctors, retinal specialists, ophthalmologists, and specialized optometrists into Highland Village to treat retinal diseases right here in Highland Village. Right now, most of my patients, I'm sending them to Plano, Southlake, and Dallas. Not that there's anything wrong with any of those cities, but I'd rather treat my patients right here in this city. We're going to be purchasing a lot of the latest and greatest equipment, like the Seres 5000, one-click, 20,000 scans into the back of your eyeball, so I can see the deepest cells and detect early glaucoma, early macular degeneration. This modern equipment will help us to treat these advanced cases much more deeply. So these are some of the cases we see at our clinic, okay? Yes, even a nail through the eyeball. So, like, you know, this is the type of stuff that I want to take care of for Highland Village, and we're committed to taking care of the patients here. In order to create the best eye clinic in Texas, we hired the best designers, the best architects, and the best engineers, and they created a beautiful place to represent our vision for modern eye care. Our lead designer actually won the HGTV 2021 Designer of the Year. So we're bringing like literally the best team aboard to create this clinic for you guys, for all of us. We just wanted a modern design, because it should represent what we're aiming for, which is modern eye care in Highland Village, with the best technology, the most high-tech clinic that is going to be in Texas. Our optical, we're going to carry all the brands that you guys know, but we're also going to have luxury brands from Paris, Italy, Germany, France, all of these specialized lenses that you can't get everywhere in Texas. So we want to bring that luxury boutique. So we want to bring that luxury boutique eye care here as well so that we don't have to drive all the way to Dallas to get some style glasses, you know? The interior design is going to facilitate a beautiful space for the people of Highland Village. It's going to match the frames, the technology, everything that's going to be part of that Highland Village look. So basically, I just wanted to take a few minutes to just tell you that, you know, we're creating this really beautiful clinic, but it's truly like we really care about Highland Village. We want to like bring, you know, the best doctors here. We're going to have a residency program through our clinic that is going to bring future bright doctors here in Highland Village. We're going to use the modern design to attract doctors who want to work here. We're going to offer employment opportunities to a lot of people in Highland Village. We're planning on expanding our staff and doubling it to 30-plus people. We're going to create that outdoor space for people to connect to the city and even for our own employees to enjoy connecting to the city. We've already helped thousands of people here over the last seven years, and we just want to use this building to help thousands more. So we're excited to have Highland Village as the place to go for premier eye care because I don't want to send my patients to Denton, Southlake, Plano, Dallas anymore. I want to serve the people here with the best equipment. So for that, we just need your approval. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Can you go back to that slide that showed your exterior building perspective?
Yep.
That one right there? Okay.
So the reason we have the logo, which is that circular logo that you see, we wanted visibility both on Barnett and on 407. And so that's why we have the name on the 407 side and the logo on the Barnett side. So we just, and the logo's a little bit larger because we wanted to use it as architectural feature. So something just to create interest on that side. So you don't just look at a boring wall. You can see something.
And in this, it would be on that wood detail, right? It's not shown there now, but that's where the intent is.
And then there's also one right after the concrete panel there as well. So that's the exception that we're asking for. And it's just for to create more visibility, some interest, keep your eyes stimulated since you're going to an eye clinic.
Do you have a tenant for the other side? Do you know?
No, but we're actually in talks with some cataract specialists, some retinal specialists that actually want to practice here in Highland Village. The closest retinal specialist is in Denton, and I refer about 30 patients a week to him. And he's, we're in talks with him to bring him to Highland Village. So, you know, when you have a retinal detachment or an emergency, you don't have to drive all the way to Dallas for that treatment.
So that is the thought for the lease space, is something, a complimentary service?
Yep.
Can you not go back to the picture of the nail through the eye? Ever again?
I just wanted to make that impact, you know?
I looked at it. I couldn't figure that out.
I don't want you guys to forget what we're all about, you know?
If you're able to expand your employee base to 30 employees, how much parking are you going to need for them and your patients? Do you have enough at this site plan?
Yeah, so actually, when we say employees, 15 employees, we have five that are remote for pulling insurance, things like that. So it won't actually be 30 people at the clinic, but it'll be 30 employees that are employed by Village Vision Center.
Autumn, on the monument sign, what is the difference in size between the logo that would go on the wood wall on the west side versus the monument side? I know there was, you had mentioned what the.
Well, the monuments.
This would be the exception.
Monument sign is not part of the exception.
Okay, yeah, it's just the logo on the two walls, right?
Just the logo, yes. So signage total here on the logo. If you look at your site, well, you don't have it, do you?
I do, I got Mike.
45 square foot is the logo. Now, you want me to compare it with?
The monument sign, I think you had mentioned one, that there was a comparison between those two signs as far as.
No, the monument is good.
Oh, 9.55, right? That's the size of the monument logo. Or maybe the total sign, I guess, is 9.55.
Doesn't seem very big. It's less than 10 square feet on the monument? Does that sound right?
Let's see here. There it is.
I guess, yeah.
Yeah, 9.55 square foot.
Okay.
Per ordinance, monuments cannot be any larger than this 4x8, 32 square foot.
While we're on the topic of monuments here, if I remember correctly, I'm drawing from meetings long ago, when was it Edward Miller was looking to go in up there? Then they wanted an extra monument sign.
Oh, Passer Railroad.
Yes.
They wanted like that center identification.
Right. Are we going to run into a similar issue if they put a tenant in there that we're going to need another monument sign?
They won't be allowed one.
They won't be?
No.
It'll have to be part of this one.
Other than they'd be able to possibly change this one and put two tenants on it.
But the size wouldn't change?
No.
And it would just be building signage then for the tenant?
Yes, yes. And it can't be larger than the primary sign, Village Vision.
And we wouldn't, they wouldn't be allowed to put one on the Barnett side? It would only be on their front, well. I understand the front of the building is actually sideways to be, yes.
Public access easement, yeah.
Yeah.
Face in south, right? And the resolution is to allow basically three, what we're going to call three signs, the two logos and Village Vision Center. Is that correct?
Yes.
In lieu of the one that's in the ordinance?
Yes.
See your wheels turning there? Any more questions?
Oh, yeah. I've got a couple. Okay, one of them was, since we didn't have a plan, I wanted to make sure that was the front door. And it looks like the front door there. Let's see, there was one other one I had. Oh, I talked about the roof plan. It really doesn't show mechanically. Oh, it was for Autumn. So if we pass a resolution tonight, is there another presentation once the detailed site plan is put together?
This is your detail.
This was, this would be, this would be our last chance to.
You'll go to city council next.
From here, and then we wouldn't have to.
No other reviews.
Meet on it. Okay, got it. That was the other question then. Okay.
And really, everything fits already with, staff has already reviewed, and it fits everything that's supposed to be there. Really, the only issue is the logo signs.
The exceptions and then looking at the intent.
Yeah.
No, that's my only concern as you go and look at all the buildings. It's a beautiful building, by the way.
Yeah, it is.
Great job. It's amazing. But you look at the other buildings, the other people who have businesses around there who, you know, essentially followed the kind of the look and feel of Highland Village. And it's just a comment, right? As, I don't know what they're thinking, but not that that matters, but this building would be so much different kind of the look and feel in that area that it's just, again, beautiful building, be amazing to have that. But what's that kind of impact on, you know, that area? You know, this building, I don't know, maybe it, I could see it, you know, somewhere else, right? Like it would fit in potentially in another place. But that's really the only concern is, you know, it's zoned correctly, but it's just a different looking than you see, you know, in that area.
I don't know.
What's the impact?
Across the street, across 407, you've got that public, the storage facility, which has more of a modern look. I mean, and it's almost eye line from this building.
Talking about Flowerman.
Yeah, it is in Flowerman.
Yeah.
But in this area, all, and Jerry's right, all the other buildings, as a matter of fact, there's one being built right now that has gables and columns and fits more of the look and feel ordinance. And I agree, it's a beautiful building.
Yeah.
I love the building. But if our city has an ordinance for this look and feel ordinance, you know, not that I agree with that, but we do have that in play. So I don't know. I think there's, I think there's, you know, we have to think about that, so.
Yep. So I did speak with the veterinarian right next door. Spoke with the dental, the dentist next door, and also just talked to Zach with Monta Bowery. Showed them the plans, showed them the pictures, showed them, they loved it. So those are our immediate neighbors in the vicinity. So.
Yeah, I love it, too. I think it's a great building. It's beautiful.
Well, and I think with the Bowery, too, with the color changes and the, you know, the shape of those buildings, that actually kind of flows coming out of there.
It does.
So. And Whataburger don't care. They're good.
Let me ask you, are you guys willing to, and again, I'm thinking of others who've come before you guys, and we've only allowed one sign on their building. Are you willing to go just to the two signs? A logo on Barnett and the name of the.
Yeah.
That way we don't, and I know it's all about branding, but.
Yeah, we're just trying to create a little bit of an architectural, you know, just something pleasing to the eye to look at. If you're in that area.
I'll give you some more insight on why, if you notice the architectural features on the front of the building, like why don't you just put some windows there? So all of our exam rooms, you can't have a light in it, so we couldn't put windows in it. Otherwise, it would be just a blank wall.
Right.
Hey, can you make this interesting where instead of just a wall, can you put something there? Because we can't have windows there.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm thinking about eliminating that one since you've got division there, and then we'll have a sign over here, too. And again, I know it's about branding, but we have only allowed that on other buildings to have one sign instead of the three.
And I guess that's one of the, I guess, conversations I've had with Autumn was like, is it, she asked me, is this, I'm like, no, that's, when we first did it, we're like, oh, no, that's just a design on the building.
Right.
She's like, no, that's, so we went back and forth.
Yeah, considered signage, right?
Yeah, to me, what's the real sign is the Village Vision Center.
That's what he was asking.
The other is just like an architectural feature. But if you're going to look at, in the legal perspective.
Is it illuminated?
Which one?
The front one. South facing.
South facing.
The logos?
Yeah, that.
Yes.
Yeah, that one. Is it illuminated?
I don't remember.
Okay.
Is the one on the west wall?
No.
No, that one's not. That's the one on Barnett.
Yep.
It is?
It is. I see it over on the side now. It says it's illuminated, the one on the south side. On this plan, it says it's illuminated. LED illumination. Yep.
Is that for this one or this one?
All of them are backlit, are they not?
I've got to check.
Is the one on the side?
Well, you have power there, so it looks like.
Yeah. Well, no, it's for this, yeah. This is the one that's specific for that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it is. It's illuminated.
Is that, is it going to be a deciding factor if it's illuminated or not?
No, I think it's more of a question of what the intent is there.
I don't think, I think on the side one, we had just, I think they put the illumination as a possibility, but we most, we won't illuminate. But the front one was the one we were going to illuminate as part of the Village Vision Center and the logo. Yeah. Because we wanted a little bit of visibility on 407.
We've got about, so actually, if we're driving through 407, you have about two to three seconds as you're passing through 407. It's like a perfect angle where you'll see it. Otherwise, the whole.
Unless you're in the Whataburger drive-thru. It's going to be 20 minutes, easy.
Yeah.
Honestly, I think we'll fit in. You know, we're, I don't think it's going to deter from anything in the area. And it really is, the reason why we're passionate about the modern design is truly because we want to, like we said, we want to, we can't convince doctors to come and work in a clinic that looks, you know, there's a look and feel to the, like you've mentioned. You said this looks like it fits in another city. And again, that's why I send my patients to Plano, Southlake, Dallas. And I want to keep my patients here. So I know it looks different, but I think, I think ultimately, I think it'll really be helpful for Highland Village to have a modern, modern design and modern clinic here.
Yeah, as a new kid on the block, when I look at this design and I look at what's down in the district, it's not that different to my eye. I think it fits pretty well.
Especially after they did the recent painting. I mean, it gives more of a modern feel to that space, so.
And these colors match that.
Well, and like you said, you've got about three and a half seconds of view from 407 down Barnett. I mean, there's not, it's not a highly traveled road. As you, I mean, if you're on Barnett Road, you're going to one of the five places on that road.
Right.
Well, just in the intent and purpose in Section 61, it's really to provide for quality, non-residential development. I would definitely say this is quality. And the fact that we're kind of, you know, in full build out in Highland Village, and there's not a lot of this to kind of be had. Anyways, in my mind, for this kind of overlay district, kind of promoting, it's not right on 407, right? I mean, it's not right on the road, it's kind of off the road. How big was this again? The total square footage of?
7200 square feet.
7200 square feet? Okay.
The building out.
We'll be in 55.
In 55? Okay. And what are your plans for the east side between the current planned building and the retention pond? Do you have any plans for that space?
Well, before they jacked up the interest rates, yeah, I had some plans, but now I don't know anymore.
Okay. What were those plans? To build another building or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Similar type building or?
You know, it's going to be at least five years of, not that far.
And then the exceptions for the signage are, really, it was just allowing another secondary logo. And then for the future, a future wall signage for the proposed lease space? Is that correct?
But that's pro-co, because each tenant can have their sign. So that one is pro-co.
Yeah, we don't really have to address that, I don't think, yet.
Okay.
It's just a matter of the logo, yeah.
And then help me visualize at least, I was trying to read. Maybe this is Scott, I don't know who would answer this, on the berming. I was trying to kind of, I understand, I get that there's no space. Because I'm assuming between this public access and drainage and the level of the entrance to the front of the, the elevation is the same, right? It's, there's no, okay. And so maybe explain the berming. I'm not entirely sure. I get there's no space in there. I just kind of wanted to understand exactly. Because you see that in some of the older buildings, right? That berming. Yeah, where they have the big.
Right.
What's kind of the purpose of that?
That was a long ago look and feel type initiative.
Okay.
It's kind of gotten away from it a little bit.
Yeah.
It was originally, the way I understood it, originally, the idea was to have a berm and then plant large diameter trees along the top of the berm to hide the buildings, I guess, to kind of give it that front yard feel.
Okay.
But that's been long gone.
There was no really utility outside of just a look? There's no utility? There was no, there's no utility?
That really became the issue, because that was in utility easements, you know, and then when the, the water district came through with the 60-inch pipeline, that kind of thwarted a lot of that, you know, and they tunneled, they tunneled a 60-inch pipeline from the, from the Walmart site to the, almost Morris.
Okay.
And actually, if you drive down Barnett, those new builders don't have berms either. And they have that strip there that's proposed here, that landscape strip between the sidewalk and the curb, but not really a berm. And with this one...
Kind of migrated to a land, a sidewalk.
Yeah, landscape strip, yeah, yeah.
Type landscape strip, because they did want pedestrian traffic.
Right. And there is proposed landscaping along that, to almost kind of do the same thing as the berm, which is hide those cars and, and the parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
If I remember correctly, that ordinance is from 2002, right?
That's when it was the, it was originally originated in 1991.
Well, and there's no room for birmingham, so it doesn't really make sense. Should have a weird-looking berm in there. Okay, and so, the only thing that's in there is just, I guess, dirt, mulch, or trees in between there, in between the...
Yeah, I don't know if we have a dimension from the curb of Barnett to the sidewalk. It looks seven or eight feet. Do you happen to know what that is?
I've got 16 feet here.
Like here? I think that's the line of the curb.
Sorry.
I didn't see a dimension on there, but...
Oh, yes, we do know. Yeah, but it's about 7 feet.
Seven, okay.
Yeah, because we have everything dimensioned from the property.
Okay.
A little wider than the five-foot sidewalk.
Yeah, says seven and a half foot utility easement.
Yeah, it's, looks like right about there.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I have two, two more questions. So, one was about these, Autumn, you had mentioned that glass curtain walls are not allowed. And I'm assuming those are the, that's actually glass on the outside of that? It's not concrete?
It states in the non-residential overlay ordinance, glass curtain walls aren't allowed. However, though, now, this is part of a building material making up, building up this corner, so you cannot regulate that.
Yeah. So, it's not allowed, but we can't regulate it?
Right. No, it's a building material.
Okay, smart. And then, let's see here, the other one was the pitch of the roof, so, and I guess maybe when I was looking at the plans, I could see from the front, yeah, I can see that profile. But what on, what about on the other side? Is that, is that a pitched roof as well, or is that...
I think that's the only pitched roof on there.
It's typically flat.
Yeah, it's flat.
Okay, so the other side of that concrete wall that kind of runs through the middle, the other side of that is, is not pitched?
That's west.
That's correct.
No.
Okay. So, I guess the other part of that was that it was, there would need to be an exception. One, there was no standard for how pitched it need to be, so I guess...
It's not listed there in the ordinance, it doesn't state how much of a slope or pitch, nothing. Therefore, it meets the intent. It does have some slope.
Now, the building has some slope, but on the other side, it's, it's flat. But, so, is this like, how do you apply that? Does the whole roof have to have some pitch, or...
They put some, it does not explain that in the ordinance, or goes in, or tells you that within the detail, so they do have some slope on there, meeting the intent. I had that clarified through city attorney in that.
Okay.
We looked at this roof line heavily.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my only two questions.
So, Autumn, another quick question, and this probably is the wrong time to ask this, but if we are limited to, of course, the ordinance says we can't use certain things on the building, but now, it's illegal for us, or we cannot say they can't regulate it, right?
State law.
So, do we have to, do we need to amend our ordinance at some point where we don't keep running into this?
That's probably something, it's kind of outdated. However, we're also almost built out also. I do know some of the future site plans that I am reviewing, they are looking at the masonry requirement, the roof line and that, they try to meet every aspect of the overlay ordinance, so.
And, and I'm like Jared, I'm wondering, when the rest of this gets built out, it's going to probably look very similar to this, and we're going to have that same question, we're going to be running into the same thing.
And then, we go into a maintenance mode, yeah.
Yep, so.
We may run into it in redevelopment also.
Pardon me?
So, we may run into the same situation in redevelopment.
Very true, very true.
And it would take city council to change that though, right?
What, the ordinance is, or that direction? City council giving the direction, hey, it is now time to...
Right, it's not, it's not, it's not something we really have to, we have to deal with it, but we don't have to fix it.
Yeah.
And that might come up when this goes forward, or if it does go forward to them.
Okay.
Do you have any closing remarks you want to make, or...
Let's do it.
What's your schedule? Start building?
Upper Grandin Brown in December?
December?
We thought we'd be done this December.
All right. Well, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve to city council this as drawn up, designed.
As is, or are you okay with the two logos?
I'm fine, I'm fine with the two logos, yeah.
I'd second that.
I mean, if you second it, then, I'm either a yes or a no, right?
Well...
The only thing is, and I don't, I don't mind the branding, I don't mind the logos, I'm just thinking of other, other applicants who've come before us, and, you know, we've set that standard of signage of, to one sign. And future applicants who've come before us, and we're going to set that standard of one sign.
Yeah, well, then, I would make a motion to recommend that we approve with the condition that the, that it would be approved for the two, two signs.
For, yeah, a logo and the sign.
Logo, logo and the sign.
Okay, I can get on board on that. You want to second that one?
Well, do we have to rescind our first motion?
How does that work?
So, I can, I'll, I'll take back my second on Jared's initial motion. Is that, is that proper?
That's fine.
That's cool, we're good with that?
You guys are going to have to clarify me, to me again.
Yeah.
We're going to leave the logo on the west?
Yes.
Logo on the west?
Correct. Signage on the south.
On the south, being Village Vision. Are we doing logo on the south?
Right, going to eliminate logo on the south.
But we are allowing the additional lease space for signage?
To have signage.
So, no logo on south, okay.
And again, that's more just because, you know, just to be fair to other applicants who've come before us, so.
Okay, so then, you'll put that in your...
You don't have to put the fair part in there.
All right, so, that's how you motioned it, correct?
Yep, motion, motion to recommend to city council to approve with the changes of the sign, just the two signs. I'll make motion to approve that.
The logo on, on the, on the west would be allowed.
This one?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the white sign you're talking about, yes. And the wording of...
All right, we have a second for Jared's motion.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Brent seconded it, all right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes.
Good luck, guys, it's a really nice building.
Cool building, yes, like it.
All right. Onto agenda eight. Receive status report on various projects.
Okay, so, next Wednesday, the 9th, 6:00 PM, boards and commission training during the council chambers. We do plan on having a regular meeting also, November 15th.
Okay.
So, we've been busy this month. And I wanted to give everybody an update on, you remember HTO, right? You did the review, we finally received the building permit on that, so, that's under review, and...
Oh, good.
Hopefully, that'll get going also.
I was wondering when that was coming around.
So, we, yeah, so that's it.
That's it, all right. Guess I'll adjourn the meeting at 8:01.